Good evening and welcome to this Prior Lake City Council meeting of Tuesday, January 9th, 2024. If you would, please all stand, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Happy New Year to all, and it's wonderful to see so many in the council chambers this evening. It also is a special day. This is Law Enforcement Appreciation Day across the country, so a great opportunity for us to recognize and acknowledge our law enforcement professionals. First item on our agenda this evening is the public forum. Public forum is that opportunity for anyone that's in the council chambers that would like to come before us to address something that has not been taken up under a hearing, something that you would like us to know about as a council. So, Manager Waddell, have we had anyone signed, no one? Beautiful. Anyone that not signed up that would like to come before us? Seeing none, let's go ahead and move along to item three on our agenda, which is the approval of the agenda itself. Counsel, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved. Burkhardt?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Burkhardt is second, and by Councilmember Churchill to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries, bringing us to item four, that is, the approval of the meeting minutes, December 4, 2023. Counsel, any additions, modifications? If none, would entertain a motion to approve as submitted.
I'm moved to approve the minutes from December 4, council meeting.
I second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Churchill and a second by Councilmember Lake to approve as submitted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries, bringing us to the consent agenda this evening. I'll go ahead and hand that over to City Manager Waddell to both introduce the consent agenda as well as those items before us this evening. Manager Waddell.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors and members of the audience. So, our consent agenda this evening is for those items that are considered routine or non-controversial, they're placed all together on the consent agenda. So unless the mayor or councillor asks for an item to be removed for separate consideration, they're all approved together under a single motion, a second, and a vote. If an item were asked to be removed for separate consideration, it would be placed under item 10 on tonight's agenda. So, tonight we have the following items on our consent agenda. Approval of the claims listing, a resolution receiving plans and specification, authorizing advertisement for bids, and authorizing a cooperative construction agreement with MinDOT for the Fish Point Road Phase III project, city project 2023-03; resolution receiving quotes and awarding the contract for the 2023-2024 Pond Maintenance Project, city project number 2023-18; approval of amendment to the city manager employment agreement; resolution approving a work order for professional engineering services for the interim assistant city engineer; resolution approving a work order for general engineering services; resolution electing the non-waiver of statutory municipal tort liability limits and declining excess liability insurance coverage; approval of the building permit summary report for the month of November 2023; approval of the annual city council appointments; resolution delegating authority to pay claims and make electronic fund transfers; ordinance amending city code 302 for peddlers definition section; resolution approving a temporary liquor license for the Prior Lake Association on February 3, 2024; and finally, approval of the November 2023 Treasurers Report.
Thank you so much, Manager Waddell. Counsel, are there any items before us on the consent agenda that you would ask be removed and taken up under item 10? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Braid to approve the consent agenda submitted, second by Councilmember Churchill. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Counsel, for the consent agenda items that we just approved, are there any for which you would like to make comments? Again, seeing none, that brings us to item 6A on the agenda. Manager Waddell, are you going to kick us off, or do we just go and...
I will kick it off, and then I will hand this to you.
Wonderful, wonderful.
So, this next item on the agenda is the reason why many of you are here this evening, and this is for our special proclamation to declare Dave Cromie Day in the city of Prior Lake for January 20th of this year. So, Mayor and Mr. Cromie, if you would join the mayor over at the side lectern. So, Dave Cromie has served the city of Prior Lake in a wide variety of roles for many years. This includes managing our local grocery stores back from Rodhamaker's Red Owl to Super Value to County Market, Village Market, and then finally Lund's and Byerly's. During the same time, he has also served on our Prior Lake Fire Department, including several years as the chief. He has served on the city's Economic Development Advisory Committee, as well on the Economic Development Authority, including four years as president of the EDA. Prior Lake would not be what it is today without the many contributions of Dave Cromie. Dave is retiring this month, and in recognition of this momentous occasion, we will be proclaiming January 20th, 2024, as Dave Cromie Day in the city of Prior Lake. And I'll turn it over to the mayor to present the proclamation.
Wonderful. Jason, thank you so much for the introduction, and also for those viewing via video, yes, there is a lot of color that you see here in both up on the dais, as well as Mr. Cromie has been always brightening up everyone's day with the color that he brings to all that he does. So, it's my pleasure to introduce this proclamation that will be declaring officially Saturday, January 20th, 2024, as Dave Cromie Day in Prior Lake. Whereas, Dave served on the Prior Lake Fire Department from 1988 to 2002, and held positions of firefighter, EMS rescue captain, fire captain, and as fire chief from 1996 to 1999. And whereas, Dave served on the Prior Lake Economic Development Advisory Committee from April 17, 2006, to October 31, 2008. And whereas, Dave served on the Prior Lake Economic Development Authority, the EDA, from April 16, 2012, to December 31, 2021, including serving as the president from 2017 to 2021. In that capacity, he guided the EDA and the city through multiple policy and regulation amendments for us to become an even more business-friendly community. And whereas, Dave's leadership was invaluable to the city during his tenure as president of the EDA, ensuring the Highway 13, County Road 21, and Main Street reconstruction project resulted in a beautiful route to downtown Prior Lake, helping minimize resident and business disruption, advancing programs to support our businesses through the pandemic, and creating new initiatives to attract customers downtown, including the inaugural Chalk Fest event. And whereas, and this is the end, for more than 50 years in the grocery industry, the past 44 of them in Prior Lake, Dave is considered by many in the community and his current employer as the unofficial mayor of Prior Lake. Dave served our community as store manager for Rodhamaker's Red Owl from 1986 to 1989, then transitioned to store manager for Super Value from 1989 to 1993, then transitioned to store manager for the new Prior Lake County Market from 1993 to 2000. He then opened the Village Market in 2004 and operated that until 2013, when it was sold to Lund's and Byerly's, and he continued on as general manager from 2013 until what will be his last day there, January 19, 2024, as he is scheduled to retire. Now therefore, I, Kurt Briggs, Mayor of the city of Prior Lake, Minnesota, do hereby declare Saturday, January 20, 2024, as Dave Cromie Day in Prior Lake, and further, with gratitude for a job well done, wish Dave all the best as he proceeds to enjoy this next phase of life in the company of family and the closest of friends. Counsel, if there are any words that you two might like to share, I want to go ahead and invite those, but if you would, at this juncture, join me in welcoming Dave, and of course, we're going to allow you to speak as well, Mr. Cromie, with a round of applause. So, counsel, any comments that you might like to make? Counselor Braid.
Dave, this is a fun day for us. We know how humble you are, and I will say that over my time, I've enjoyed serving with you on the EDA, getting to know you, and becoming your friend. You're one of the best that this community has to offer, there is no doubt, and your contributions to the city of Prior Lake and our great city will go on in perpetuity. So, thank you for all that you've done and that you do for our great community.
Thank you. Councilmember Burkhardt?
Dave, I think so highly of you, and thank you so much for everything that you do for our community. We need more of you. And, boy, Rodhamaker's Red Owl, I remember going to that when I was a teenager, a lot, a long time ago, and I didn't know you then. I wish that I would have, but I was very fortunate later in life to be able to work with you in my capacity with the city here and get to know you, and just always appreciated your smile and collegiality and what a good person you are. So, congratulations on your retirement and look forward to connecting with you in the future and seeing where things go. Take care.
Counselor Lake.
Although not knowing Dave personally, I really appreciate the smile every time I walk into Lund's and Byerly's, and just thank you for everything you've done for the city.
Counselmember Churchill.
So, I just have to say, I was sharing with Jason last week that every time I see you, Mr. Cromie, you remind me of Christopher Reeves, and it's because you're both Superman. I think that's the reason.
Dave, before I turn the microphone over to you, again, your presence, stable, kind of the keel to what was our EDA ship when I was elected mayor. Something that we did as a city that had never been done before is we turned the gavel of the EDA over to some person at the time that was not an elected. And that was because of the respect and the admiration that this community had for you, and just want to let you know that your time serving with the gavel has forever moved us in a very positive direction. Personally can't thank you enough. And with that, your words, and then we will call a recess for photos.
The words probably have to be short because the voice won't last very long tonight. Kurt, thank you for recommending I wear a green shirt tonight because anything else would clash with my red face, I'm sure. Thank you for all the kind words and everything. I have to thank my mom. She's probably the one that instilled my work ethic in me. She's a very kind person, a very gentle person, very patient, and I know I'm not near the level she is, but it was always one of my goals to be as patient, as kind, and good to people as my mom was. So, thank you, Mom, for instilling that in me. With this busy life, comes a lot of sacrifices too, and it happened with those people with those funny blue shirts on. There was a lot of sacrifices by the family too, for the fire department and meetings and things like that too, and they're just as part of this as I am. It takes a team effort, and there's a lot of people in the community that were involved in a lot of the things that were said in here too, including members up here. It's more than just me, but it was great to be part of it. It's been a good ride. January 19th will be a bittersweet day. It'll be kind of a tough day to walk out of that store. I know it's going to be a surreal feeling, but I guess this makes it official that January 20th, we will celebrate. Thank you very much. Thank you.
The council will stand in recess at 7:14. Let us call the meeting of the Prior Lake City Council back to order at 7:20 PM. That brings us to item 7A, which is the public hearing to approve an off-sale liquor license to MGM Wine and Spirits, and for that, I will turn it over to Manager Jason Waddell.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors and members of the audience. So, the item before you this evening is the resolution to approve an off-sale liquor license to MGM Holdings, doing business as Wine and Spirits operating under new ownership. So, MGM Holdings LLC opened at their current location at 14173 Commerce Avenue in October of 2008 under a corporate ownership. In 2010, the corporation allowed franchise owners to operate the store, and they'd been operating there basically until now. MGM Holdings, the corporate office, is now seeking re-ownership of the retail facility at that location, which requires them to obtain a new off-sale liquor license. All property taxes and monies owed to the city for that property are current, and there does not appear to be any other reason. That fourth under state statute or in Prior Lake city code that would preclude them from being issued a license. It has always been the city's practice to hold a public hearing for an initial license issuance, but not for renewals, but because this is going back to the corporate office. This did trigger the need for a public hearing this evening, so that really is it. So, if there are any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, we'd ask the city council to open the public hearing.
Counselor, any questions for Manager Waddell on this item? Seeing none, I would go ahead and entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved. Burkhardt seconds.
We have a motion to approve or open the public hearing at 7:22 PM. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. The hearing is now open at 7:22. I can see that we have Mr. Mike Maglich, who has been signed up to be heard on this item this evening. Mr. Maglich, we look forward to your comments. At the base of the microphone, you'll see what I think is a red light, and if you touch it, it will turn green, allowing others to hear you, and we look forward to your comments.
Good evening. I'm Mike Maglich, one of the principals of MGM. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to come here this evening and speak with you. As you know, that we're here for this liquor license, and I would appreciate your support in approving this license. We recognize that it's a privilege to be awarded an off-sale liquor license in any city that we operate in, certainly here in Prior Lake. Often, people don't recognize that, that it is a privilege to have a license, and particularly a liquor license. We're very excited about getting back into that store, and there's been a lot of work that's necessary for us to do in there, and it was a blessing in disguise that we didn't try and do it a little bit faster. There's a significant amount of, and a substantial amount of investment that we have to make into the store regarding new shelving, more shelving. The cooler needed some significant repairs, some new lighting on the, obviously the outside of the building, the lighting is in disrepair. We have that being all repaired and upgraded. So, it's just a little bit bigger task than we anticipated. Our biggest concern has been the employees. We've hired one of the employees that was a full-time employee there, and we've kept him on staff in our other stores. We're interviewing all of the former employees, and we'd like to hire them all back, at least any of them that want to come and work for us. It was unfortunate that they weren't able to work throughout the holiday season, and there seems to be some problem with their last paycheck, so we're going to take care of that and help them through that. I want to apologize to the city here, and Mayor Briggs, and to the community for us not being able to be open during the holidays when their expectations are that that's where they want to go and shop. We have a lot of loyal customers here in the city of Prior Lake. We've been here, as you all know, since 2008, so we celebrated our 15th year. I know that's a tough act to follow for Mr. Comrie here, but we've been in business for the last 50 years, 50, over 50 years, 53 years now, and, you know, this store is one of our crown jewels. So, it's hard to see it closed. We're going to, as I said, mentioning, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to put in a significant investment in there, expanding the selection of all of our products, some new shelving, and a whole new look to the store. It's just hard to see it closed, and we apologize for that. But we'll get it open as soon as we can, and it'll be significantly different. So, without keeping you here any longer than you have to be, I can answer any questions you might have regarding the store, or, you know, our intentions, or anything about MGM. Be happy to answer those. I do want to say one thing before I leave, and I want to thank the administration and the staff here for their professionalism and their efficiency and their support while we were working through this complex transition. It's refreshing to have that. This young lady sitting at over there did a remarkable job, Mr. Waddell. Thank you. It's just nice to have that kind of support, and I think it's a testament to the leadership of you folks up here, and it pretty much shows that you support small businesses, because that's what we are. We're just a small business. I know it seems like we're bigger, but as we franchise, we like to have small businessmen come in and operate our stores when that's available. We, you know, we're a franchise company, but we also have corporate stores. So, with that, if there's any questions...
Counsel, seeing none, I want to thank you so much for your testimony this evening. I'll go ahead and see if there's anyone else that would like to speak this evening. Seeing none, counsel, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Braid, and a second by Councilmember Lake. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the hearing is closed at 7:28 PM. Counsel, is there any discussion this evening? Councilmember Burkhardt, please.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, gentlemen. Just so that members of our community understand, this is not an additional liquor license for our community. It is new ownership and new management for this store, and I'd like to express my gratitude towards the folks that are here this evening for your investment in our community. It's sizable. We've heard the numbers, and significant, and it's a prominent retail location at the entrance to our city on the north side. And MGM, our community has had connection to MGM for a long time. The Miller family, who had four MGM units, they were here, lived on Grainwood Bay in the 70s, 80s, 90s. Their son lived on Candy Cove for a long time, and so MGM's been a prominent brand here for a long time. So, thank you so much, and we wish you the best as you move forward. You have my support for this liquor license.
Counsel, I also want to thank MGM, Mr. Maglich in particular, who, you and I had the opportunity of meeting on had the opportunity of meeting on a telephone conversation approximately a month ago. And I will say what he shared in terms of assurance and commitment to the city, we, counsel, were able to see it also this evening. And he did share with me not only how pleased he was, as I see Ms. Simon there, with how he was accorded the highest level of professional exchange, and how city staff wanted to do all that they could and felt somewhat regretted that it was going to require a hearing. But again, I add my gratitude to that of Counselor Mayor Burkhardt for the investment, the commitment in our community, and I will be supporting this action this evening. With that, or Counselor Mayor Bray, with that, I would entertain, right, the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve of the resolution issuing an off-sale liquor license for MGM Wine and Spirits for the period of January 10, 2024, to June 30, 2024.
Burkhardt seconds. We have a motion by Councilmember Brayden, a second by Councilmember Burkhardt. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. With that, counsel, that brings us to our council member liaison updates. If I can look to Councilmember Victor Lake, Mr. Lake.
Mayor, counselors, December, it's been a long time, hasn't it? December 8, I attended the SCALE General Meeting, and on January 3, I attended the Legislative Committee Meeting. I was also part of SCALE. On January 4, I had my agenda review, and on January 5, I attended the Executive SCALE Meeting.
Thank you so much, Mr. Lake. Counselor Lake, Councilmember Churchill, please.
I attended the SCALE General Meeting on December 8, and I had my agenda review on January 4, and I think that's it.
Wonderful. Counselor Mayor Burkhardt.
Mayor, members of the council, on December 11, I had a Suburban Transit Association Board Meeting. On December 13, the MVTA Board Meeting. On December 20, the orderly annexation agreement meeting. On January 4, I had my agenda review. On January 5, attended the ribbon cutting at Scooter's Coffee on Highway 13 and Franklin Trail with the mayor and our Director of Development, Casey McCabe. On January 8, had a Suburban Transit Association Board Meeting, and also January 8, the orderly annexation meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mayor Burkhardt. Counselor Mayor Bray.
Mayor, members of the council, the December 11 EDA meeting was canceled. The, attended a meeting on December 20 for annexation, also had a call on December 21 for liaison appointments. On January 4, attended my agenda review, and on January 8, attended an annexation meeting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Counselor Mayor Bray, for my report, December 8, a SCALE General Meeting. December 11, had the opportunity of serving food to our seniors at the VFW with Manager Widdell. On the 12th of December, had a meeting with the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. On 13, had a MLC Pool House year-end gathering. On the 14th of December, had an opportunity of meeting with the chairman of the SMSC. On the 16th of December, there was a Toys for Tots collection opportunity at Boathouse Brothers by the Ment Group. On the 19th of December, we had a quarterly meeting with the county commissioners and with the administrator. As Councilmember Burkhardt said, we had a Scooter's ribbon cutting here on the 5th of January, and had a Regional Council of Mayors meeting on the 8th. And that concludes my comments. Manager Widdell.
Mayor and counselors, I was just going to point out that earlier on the consent agenda this evening was the approval of all of your liaison assignments, which is why we have this item on our agenda tonight at the end of the meeting, is so that you all have the opportunity to discuss all the various other work that you all do apart from just attending city council meetings, which is, as you all heard, is a lot of work. And as staff, I just want to say thank you for all you guys do, extra evenings and weekends and meetings, and it is very much appreciated, and I think the quality of the work and the things that we're doing in the city are a direct result of all these extra efforts. So thank you.
Thank you, Manager Widdell. With that.
I would move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Churchill to adjourn, a second by Councilmember Bray. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. The meeting is adjourned at 7:35.